10, 2016, this is the Situate Planning Board and we have a proposed agenda.
I move that we accept the agenda.
No, second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all about old business, new business, et cetera today. Start with a Form A for three... Can't read that. Louis Lane?
Louise.
Louise Lane. 167 Captain Pierce Road. Okay.
It's actually Captain Pierce Road extension.
Oh, it says here. Who's here for this? Come on up, grab a seat. And just introduce yourselves and tell us what you're looking to do.
I am Joyce Friedman at 167 Captain Pierce Road.
Paul Garren, 3 Louise Lane.
For over 26 years, my favorite part of my driveway has not been on my land, it's been on the abundant land of 3 Louise Lane. And so we decided to finally sort of redo the lot lines so that I can legally use my driveway and peaceful rate. So we did it so that Paul and Peg, my neighbors, will still have their setback and they'll have a 40-foot setback lower down so that part of what I'm getting is an easement and not an deed so that their setback isn't affected.
That's correct.
And so that's the drawing that we're looking at here, I guess then, huh? What is... Does it show where the existing lot is or this is just what the new proposed lot is?
Yeah, the existing lot line is the...
It's that heavy line down the center, right?
Yeah.
So I'm trying to figure out what's changing here.
But if you see the easement area in Lot B, the lot line is the straight line.
This line. This driveway is on the other side of Lot A. What we're gonna do is we're gonna move this three second segments up and then we're gonna use that as a property line instead of this one.
Okay. So this is more like an existing condition as opposed to proposed?
Well, it's changing the lot.
It's existing on the ground but it's...
We're changing a lot.
Different property lines.
And so the lot line...
Lot B is transferring from one lot to the next.
Right.
Okay, but then the lot line would basically go along the edge of the driveway, is that what you're saying? On that last kind of triangular piece down at the lower end?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, where it says Lot B, not a buildable lot?
So Lot A becomes slightly smaller. Lot B becomes slightly bigger.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Are the square footages in each one of the lots with the big print, if you will, are those new or existing today?
They're the... That was... That would be the new ones, so Lot A would now be 22, 396 square feet.
Okay, so you still wall in excess of 20,000 square feet which you need for zoning?
Yeah, and our frontage isn't affected at all, it's the back of the lot.
Right.
Okay.
So just so I understand, the driveway is coming off of Captain Pierce?
Yes, it is.
Right? So there's kind of this weird little Y thing that's there?
Yeah, I actually parked in the bottom of Captain Pierce where the Y is, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, I parked down there in the winter so that my plow guide can come up, I think that's why it was put in there because the... My driveway goes like this.
Okay, and so then, just to... So I understand this, the driveway comes up?
Yeah.
And then where... Is there a garage or does it...
No.
So it doesn't go into a garage or anything, okay? It just sort of stops there at where the lot line is?
Yeah, there's some landscaping stuff along it, there's maybe a four-foot thing between the fence and the driveway.
Okay.
All right. So we're adding 1,000 feet to... Square feet to the Lot B then? That's what we're doing?
To my lot.
Yeah.
1,027, right?
And then you have an easement for another 50, around 530.
Yeah.
Three square feet.
We have a fence that goes down there so we just figured we just did the easement, so I mow it basically.
Okay, so that's an existing fence, that's what those posts are showing. Are you on town sewer or septic?
Oh, I wish, septic.
Okay.
Don't we all?
And does the new lot line get, you know, unusually close to the septic field or the tank?
Not at all. No, the septic system, Captain Pierce is up here, the new stuff is down here, my septic system is over here.
Okay.
And his septic system.
It's up in this area.
Oh, okay, great.
Okay.
Sat in this corner.
Oh, yeah, I should probably be using the big plan.
Laura, do you have anything?
No, there's no change in the frontage and the areas both continue to meet zoning and Pierce's setbacks don't change in any way that's not conforming, so I don't see any reason why it can't be endorsed.
Okay.
Then you gotta plow your own driveway.
Thank you. So excited, you have no idea.
Any other questions?
Do we have a motion?
We do.
Thank you. I move to endorse as approval under the subdivision control law not required, a plan of land located in Situate, Massachusetts, showing a division of parcel 26-2-9 at 3 Louise Lane, prepared by DeSalle, Burke &amp; Associates Incorporated for Joyce Friedman of 167 Captain Pierce Road dated November 23, 2015, as the division of the tract of land shown on the accompanying plan is not a subdivision because it shows a proposed conveyance and change in lot line which does not alter the existing frontage as required under the Situate zoning by law.
I'll second that.
We have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. You're all set.
Thank you very much.
Get out of your own driveway.
Make your lot clean so that if you want sell off, there's no problem. So that someday you can... I have a good neighbor.
Actually, it's... My neighborhood is fantastic.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Tomorrow we'll have the plan signed and you can pick it up and go to registry and record it. I'll have to do that on Monday. You just go to your office?
Yeah, I'll email you tomorrow when it's ready, that way.
I've got three already, so...
Oh, you do?
Yeah, I'm all set.
Okay. I keep them all. I have it.
Okay.
Someday you'll be like, "Do we have that plan?" I'm like, "Yes, I actually do."
I see the... I see the fire chief is here, so shall we address the lighting issue?
Sure.
Okay. Maybe... Are you prepared to give us a little overview or...
Sure.
Good evening, thanks for accommodating us. One of the issues we've been working on with the new public safety building with the contractor is one of the requirements that was approved by the planning board after the document... The contracting bids went out. So the job was bid and the work was bid and one of the requirements for the public safety building was that the lights be dimmed in the parking lot. We are in a position now where that's a change order on the contract and also though some concerns expressed by the police chief and the fire chief relative to dimming in the emergency... In an emergency building, so with that I'll just... Chief Murphy and Lieutenant Thompson are here to share with you some information about the site and the issue of the dimming.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure, so from our standpoint, when we look at the southeast side, south southeast side, which is as you're looking at the building through the right-hand side of it, there will be significant traffic through this area in terms of that's the public area, so anyone who's coming in for meetings will come in this way. The lights that are connected to those would be the walkway going to the front, that's also the area where is the bail release section, so anyone who's coming in 24 hours a day to release and bail somebody out will be coming out through this parking lot, through this area, so there'll be a lot of high volume going through there and I think it's important that we make sure that that's properly lighted.
And you know, we're gonna be... We have personnel entering the building at all times at night, we have shift change, we also have dispatches coming at midnight, you have people to be surprised, people walk in from the public at all hours of night asking for directions or they drive up to the station so they don't want an ambulance coming, so we feel well that building is important for both fire and police and for the public.
Okay.
So just questions, I'm looking at... Laura was nice enough to send out the PDF plan where she highlighted the yellow?
That came from Tricia, actually.
Okay, well, thank you.
For me, but it came from our OPM, so...
So I just wanted to understand, so what you're talking about is the yellow light, what's the... You had a... In the blue highlight you have in the back of the building, what... Are those...
That's a secure area.
So the blue would also be lit?
The blue will be lit as well.
Like 24 hours?
Right, this area to the right-hand side is more the public side and I think that's the area in question with regards to the dimming.
Oh, okay.
So while it is public and it's not the secure section, there would still be people going in and out of there 24 hours a day, whether it's from an EOC standpoint if there's some type of incident going on, the bail release or just meetings and also the general walkway, so if we have somebody pulls up at 2:00 in the morning for some type of domestic and they're walking in the building, that's the path that they're gonna be taking, they're gonna be walking along in front of that, so there will always be traffic there regardless of day or night.
And just so I understand, so the proposal right now would be that all of these lights would be on 24 hours a day?
No, the proposal is that they have to be dimmed after, I forget the parameters.
Well, I guess...
They wouldn't be on 24 hours a day, but when they came on in the evening, they would have to be dimmed after a certain hour.
Well, that's what it says now, I guess what I'm saying, I'm sorry.
Well, it says both. It says both on, off, and intensity, so it's both.
So the... I guess I'm sorry, your proposal or what you're trying to... The change order would be that the lights would not be dimmable, is that correct? Just so I understand.
Correct, be on and off, not dimmable, correct.
Right. As they're in specs now, they're on and off.
Yeah, it is a cost issue too, I think the original cost was $37,000, I know it's come down, so it's a considerable cost to do that.
I think Laura...
It's like 15.
It's at $12,000, five... Or was it 15?
15, 15.
It was originally 38.
Wow.
We just got... But that was a prospective PO change. We just got those reduced figures yesterday at the construction meeting.
And that seems to be because they're running control cables, all these lights, right? Did somebody consider wireless control?
The engineers designed this, so...
There's a lot of wireless technology for LEDs now that you don't need to run control cable, right? So I just wondered if somebody's brought that issue up.
We could certainly ask the question, Stephen, it's the first that's been brought up though. Because mostly we're here because the wires and conduits are being... We're at that point right now.
Right, it looked like most of the cost was in running all the cables and the conduits and... Well, the conduits are there, it looked like they were just pulling additional control cable, it looked like, but... But there are, there's a whole suite of new technology that's focused on wireless control for pole lights, so I don't know if anybody's looked... It doesn't sound like anybody's looked at it.
They haven't proposed it, so I'm not sure if that's an option, it probably could be, but hasn't been looked at by the engineers and the electricians.
We could certainly ask that question in terms of control. I mean, the lights that we're looking at, that the towns purchasing have multi options, like you say, for frequent... The amount of lumens they throw and wear and stuff like that, so you know, the lights will probably have that capability. It's just...
Yeah.
It's really why we're performing tonight is them being off and dimmed.
Do they have... Do they have occupancy sensors with them? So which would avoid the problem of somebody coming up, it would turn on.
The inside does, I don't believe the outside does.
Be a little hard to manage on a site, you know, in that... In that large of an area.
Not really.
Maybe it could be tripped by a car driving into the parking lot or something.
It could be tripped by a person walking by too. I've seen a lot of this technology these days, but...
But as Lieutenant said, I mean, we have the graveyard chips coming in constantly, we expect the EOC, which is, I hope we don't really use it as an EOC much, but that's a 40-seat meeting room, so... And it will be used nightly.
The lights...
So how does this... How will this sort of address the issue that we originally sort of set up here, which is to minimize the impact to the surrounding neighbors and all of that? How will this... Is there another way to address that?
Well, maybe Chief or Lieutenant want to... I mean, our challenge with this building is it's a unique building, it's not one a community builds every day, and so I think it has different requirements than another type of building like a business or whatever, where there's no occupants in it. There are a few abutters, but it's not a thickly settled area, as you all know, for that, and across the street there's not much, so I think the impact to it would be less... More for some, but less in this particular case, and I'm not minimizing that, it's just...
And the design of these lights in themselves, I believe the intent of those was to keep the light focused on.
On the site, right.
As opposed to spilling beyond the problem.
Right, so they have a...
Just in the design of the light.
They have a cutoff.
And I'm trying to remember exactly why we included that, I know we did that for the library. The library was a bigger issue where people were more concerned because it was a residential area.
Well, that was even the interior lights we talked about.
Yeah, I think we used the same language because we had used that in the library situation, I think.
You have a lot of housing there, you have Central Park there, so there's a lot more housing there, this is almost three quarters encapsulated by trees, minimal impact and merely 3A is where the impact is.
I think it was also an energy efficiency thing too, right? I mean, that's part of the reason we thought they should have it, right, is that we should, you know, only use the electricity we need to use, right?
These LED lights.
Yes, I'm sorry, Ann, I'm monopolizing the conversation, go ahead.
One of the things that I've seen over the years in our buildings, whether it's the schools or whether it's the fire department, the police agency, is the total lack of lighting. There is none. I mean, I used to teach at the high school and come out the front door and there were no lights, and as a matter of fact, it's only recently that the lights along here have been turned on, so frankly, I have no problem with this. I know I cannot vote on this this evening because I'm the alternate, but I think what you're proposing is to not dim it, I don't have an issue with that in any way, shape or form, I think that it is a matter of safety rather than economy.
The only other thing I want to say, Steve, which Chief forgot and I forgot but just remembered, is I think you may be aware that the public safety building on the fireside has a medical unit room so that people can drive right off the road and be triaged walking in the door, and that's certainly gonna be a 24/7 use.
And they are LED lights, so I think there's a pretty good cost effectiveness already built into the lighting, so I'm not sure the savings would offset that other cost to even dim them, take a long time anyway.
So what, the dimming, the lights stay the same?
Yes.
So the locations are the same, the light, the...
Yes.
That's the only thing, is the requirement to dim.
We were surprised how much it cost, you know, especially initially, the $38,000 was a high price, we thought, and we just learned actually literally yesterday, the costs have come down, but it's still significant.
Do you have the lighting engineer's kind of metric of what lumens are available to each part of the site typically that... The reason I'm asking is, was there a sort of light level, a limit of light level set, you know, for the project, we need so many lumens in order to be safe or...
Yeah, I'm sure there's a code for that.
You know, that kind of thing.
They haven't come up to that code, whatever the code is, but I don't have that answer, Bob, we can get that for you?
Yeah, codes vary, I mean, it depends on where you are and what the use is, and I'm interested because this is a pretty specific use, and as you say, it's not only intense, but it can be emergency kind of biased in the situations that you're dealing with, so there's probably some sort of, you know, light level that people have established as being the right one for the area.
Sure, there is a scale and it's probably a little bit on the higher end.
It's probably a little higher than just a supermarket parking lot or something like that, but I would also want to be sure that the lighting that's being provided doesn't exceed that level.
Sure.
Because, yeah, there's not many people in that part of town, but a big site like that, six acres, totally illuminated, 24/7, is definitely gonna receive some comments. I think we all can realize that.
The point that Ann brought up too, that when we talk about the use of what happens here, what even happens right now in front of our station is throughout the day and night, we have a lot of exchanges that happen, so those will be coastal changes between, ex-husband, ex-wife, things like that, we've had more than one domestics that have happened outside. This area will all be covered by camera and those are things that we use back for evidentiary when we have something happen.
Okay, again, that's gonna establish a light level, it's gotta be maintained.
That light level has to be maintained with that as well too, so the cameras will have function in low light, but the better the lighting, the better the coverage we're gonna have for things like that.
And what would be the process if a neighbor found that the light was infringing upon them?
Well, I think we review the request and how critical it was to the use of the building, I mean, we'd certainly be open to concerns.
Well, their concerns are probably gonna be, you know, midnight to 5:00 AM, right? That's probably gonna be their concerns mostly is whether they've got these big lights shining, you know?
Well, you want to say...
You're gonna have the same issue too with the middle school too, because that is definitely encroaching much closer to some of the abutters than we have here, I mean, it's gonna... It's gonna be an issue for that project as well.
I think we had the same condition, right?
Oh, you probably did, they're just not there yet, yeah.
We should look at wireless technology.
Just a question, since you mentioned that, like a butter, are these like all or one, meaning that you turn on, there'd be an on and off switch and they would all go on, like, you know, looking at the plan, in the upper left-hand corner, which is SL1-3 or 1/3, for instance, let's say that was encroaching or someone said, "Oh, after 2:00 AM I want that one turned off," could you selectively just turn one off or it's all or nothing?
That's a good question.
I think... I think that's possible, I mean, it's hard to do, but you know, to actually using it and the staff becomes familiar.
Maybe a shield one side of it, the other thing, LED light is more of a direct light.
Unless you have the control technology and you won't be able to turn them off individually.
LED is a direct light, so you get more of it's just a focus down LED.
Yeah, you don't wanna be able to see the bulb when you look at the site, you don't wanna see that hotspot.
We can dim it, we can dim it, the technology will allow us to dim it if it's too bright. We could shut it off.
Right, but you have to do it kind of on the entire circuit, if you don't have a control individually at the pole, then you're gonna have to do the whole circuit and that may not serve your other purposes, so...
Realistically, you'd probably put some type of shield on that light, those other lights impeding, you might put a shield or some sort of cover, just shielding it going from, say, take back to the woods and just covering the parking lot if that was an impact.
Yeah, you could do that. I mean, I would hope that it's already as dim as practicable so that is no... There's no more impact on the neighborhood than is absolutely necessary to maintain functionality and safety, so given that, why would you dim it below that level?
Right.
And given that, again, I hope it's not greater than that level so that there's more disruption than is necessary.
We maybe look at the lumens that are allowed.
Yeah, exactly.
Put all the bulbs at the lower end if that's allowed, like I say, say 100-watt bulb going to a 60-watt bulb to...
Something like that should be at least checked on.
Dimming is usually used in areas that, at times, when there's nobody there, right? There's no reason to completely light something up if, you know, for four or five hours of night, nobody's there and you cut the energy use in half, that's the reason most of this is dimmed, right? And a lot of times it's combined with a motion sensor so that if somebody actually goes in the area, it jumps to 100% again, but it really just depends on the fixtures that have been designed and ordered here.
Correct. We can go back and ask if there is a variable lumens or something, we could bring it down, or just, you know, enough to do what we need to do, to cover the cameras, to cover what we need to get in and keep it safe, but maybe lumens, you know, the bulb size or bulb strength, to look if that's an option to reduce that.
I think that's at least worth looking at, yeah.
But you're kind of at the point where you need to decide whether you're gonna pull the trigger on this change order or not, right?
Right, we've been working on it for two weeks because the first one came in at 35,600 and so we asked them to go back, so we're... We've been working under the guys that it's required and then asked to get on the agenda because I was just sort of looking at working through the components of the change order, but at our construction meeting, the chiefs raised bigger concerns, which is their need to, you know, have good lighting 24/7 because they never close.
So do you think that you could change this so that the dimming portion is taken out with the understanding that whatever they can do to ensure that it's not this flood? Because I think it makes sense, I think that, again, it is public safety and they are using this building 24/7.
Right.
It should be... No one should feel that it's not safe, I think that's more an overriding issue as far as I'm concerned.
Well, and as Tricia said, it's a very unique building.
Right.
It's, you know, there's not another one like it in town, so it makes sense to me.
I would be opposed, it's just eliminating the condition in its entirety rather than trying to...
I mean, as it stands now, the dimming is not included in the contract price, so that would have to be an extra paid for in addition to the contract price, so if we... Right?
So can we... Can you all just eliminate that portion? Just get rid of it?
Yep, I mean, that's really an option.
I think that'd be the cleanest way of doing it.
But I just... I also would represent on behalf of the town is that, I mean, I'm already intrigued with what Steve had just said about the wireless, but that, to Bob's point, we would put it at the minimum that's established for it to meet our needs, but also be as less intrusive to the neighborhood as possible, and we can absolutely commit to that.
Well, yeah, hopefully the design engineer has done that already. I'm hoping, you know, I'm assuming that's how they...
Lighting engineers like light, that's what they do.
I'm assuming that's how they laid out the light structure itself, but...
Is he a stock in National Grid?
Well, you don't wanna pay the National Grid bills, so... So is everybody okay here with eliminating that as a feature? I would like to hear back from somebody on whether they could use this technology and maybe it's gonna end up applying more to the middle school than it does apply to the public safety building, but it seemed to me, when I just looked at all the paperwork, that most of the cost was in running all the wires to everything, you know, not necessarily in the cost of controlling the fixture itself, so...
I think you all should take a moment.
Yeah, I was getting there.
No, I think I'm gonna pursue that even further because definitely, you know, I think we're gonna... If you have the same requirement in the middle school, then, you know, that conversation might be before us, again, it would be good to be in at the beginning for...
Well, more importantly, if you end up owning a lot of streetlights, then you probably want the wireless control and communication with those as well, so...
Yeah, yeah.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I kinda scribbled out a motion, you can probably read this, right?
Motion.
The probable motion is...
Do you wanna say change the condition or strike the condition?
Well, I said change it because there's a lot of other things in condition seven besides this.
Oh, okay, so let's see, I move to change condition seven in the site plan review for the public safety complex to eliminate the requirement for dimming the exterior lighting with the understanding that the town will investigate ways to dim the individual lights oh toward... To control, maybe not dim.
Whatever you want.
To control the individual lights if this is needed or...
Desirable.
Or, yeah, desirable, or also to create screening, as you mentioned, maybe there's... Maybe it's not dimming it, but maybe there's a shield.
Say that you look at options to reduce the impact on it.
Yeah, so... Will investigate ways to look at individual options to control the light level if this is needed and lighting will not intrude on the site...
I think it's an off-site.
Oh, off, I'm sorry, on off-site properties.
Do you have a second?
Yes.
Any discussion?
Or did you wanna add anything, Bob?[1734.54]
I don't think we could control, you know, any off-site impacts if, like, the person who lives right here doesn't want the light in the entrance to offer me a lot. That's the only thing. I mean, I agree with it in concept. It's just, you know, it's also gonna depend maybe where the light is, you know? I mean, most of those we can accommodate, but if it's, like I said, the entrance light.
I'd like to see it a little less-
Those could be shielded at least, right?
I'd like to see it a little less wordy. You know, keep it simple.
Let me try a motion. Look at all options to minimize the impact.
Do you have words?
Here.
You have the most words?
I just eliminate the dimming portion and let it go.
I'd say, under seven, eliminate the, the, the condition that says the lighting in public parking lot shall be programmed to as on, off, and intensity. Just eliminate that.
Just completely eliminate it. I mean, we've, we've, we've heard that, you know, measures will be investigated to make sure that impact on the neighborhood is no greater than is absolutely necessary. So I think that's in the minutes. That's really all we need. Okay.
You know where to find us if this, you don't get far.
Okay, do we have a second on that motion?
Second on Bill's motion.
Well, hold on, we have a second on-
Well, actually, it was Bill's motion, so he, he, he did it.
Right, we had a second on your motion.
I'll strike my motion.
You withdraw your motion.
I withdraw.
Okay, we have a second on Bill's motion.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You should come by and see the site. The steel is coming in two weeks.
Yeah, I see it all the time.
Yep, I see it all the time as well.
Another issue, we're trying to get the curb cut approved for Mass DOT. It's like an act of Congress.
Oh, I'm sure that's true.
We could, we could vote that, too.
Trust me, I think we want the steel coming in over 3A and not being locked.
Can I ask a stupid question that you may know the answer to off the top of your head? What's the distance between the highway and the, the building?
I believe it's 100 feet.
100, 100 feet, four, 150 feet, four inches.
Okay, thank you.
No, no, but I mean, that's what it says on the plan.
Because it seems closer. I don't know, when you drive by, maybe it's just because that's where the-
That's what it's supposed to be anyway.
The concrete or where the, the foundation is just seems closer to, I was surprised at how close it was to the-
Yeah, the zoning, the zoning folks, including me, have, have actually asked for an Asbilt on that area of the foundation to make sure that the, that the buffer is maintained, that the setbacks-
Yeah, because there's the Greenway buffer.
Right, and there's a 3A corridor that you can't encroach on as well.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
So that portion, Richard, that's closest to the road, that's the EOC.
Okay.
Yeah. It juts out a little from the rest, and the rest is setback.
Right.
Yeah, I had my tour yesterday of the elevator pit.
It does look close, I absolutely admit.
Yeah, I mean, just-
It does.
With driving by, I was just a little bit surprised, because I'm like, ooh, it's very, it's closer than I expected it to be, that's all.
Well, you don't want to waste any time getting from the building to the street.
Yes.
It's coming out, March 28th or the week of-
Is it there for just one day that we're in and dumping it?
Yeah, it's coming in every week for, that building's quite a lot of steel. Like, it will be out here, too.
I'd just do it and say, maya kupa.
I think John asked, what happened to, you know, they said, well, can't we just do it anyway? And I was like, vaguely, so, blah, 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 blah.
Yeah, really.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
That would be wrong, and we're on camera. Okay. We're, we're down to the, the nits and nats here. How about a county?
Nits and nats.
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Okay. I move that we approve, wow.
Wow.
$15,134.71 for, this is the return of the bond for the surety, I'm sure, or return of bond for installation of border street drainage associated with the stormwater permit for eight border streets. And $724.54 for the refund in excess of permitting funds to the planning board guarantee account, as Ford is no longer the owner. Oh, this is for the, the, what is it, Green Bush? Yeah, what's it called? Green Bush Station Place? And $406.02 for the legal ad in the Situate Mariner on one, on January 12th and February 4th for the stormwater general bylaw changes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, minutes?
We do have one, I know.
We can have somebody else sign those if you want, Richard.
One was done.
Okay. Keep the process moving.
All right. I move that we approve the Situate Planning Board minutes for February 25th, 2016, and I think we all had a chance to review those, because Karen forwarded those out.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Liaison reports?
Okay, EDC.
Sure.
We met last night. Unfortunately, we did not have a quorum, but we did a little brainstorming. And what we want to do, we had a walk through great, through North Situate, talked about what was up there.
Oh, is that what that group was? I was, I saw you guys.
That was us.
We thought you were an health department.
I figured you were trying to buy the place, actually.
No, no, we weren't trying to buy the place, but what we're trying to do is figure out the best and highest, best use for North Situate Village. And while we fully understand that much of this is predicated on sewer, we need to really look at what can be done up there, come up with some options, alternatives, what have you, so that if and when sewer does come, we are not reacting, but rather we have some type of a definitive plan of where we want to go and how we want to get there. And it's not something that's going to happen next year. It's probably a five-year, 10-year, 15-year out of how all of this is going to transpire. Change is very difficult, as we all know, and this has to be done, if it is to be done, incrementally. And, um, the buildings, some of them may or not, may or may not need to be changed. Some of them, when you really look at North Situate, all you see are parking lots. And something, it's not really, parts of it are cohesive and parts of it are not. So that's something that, that we are working on. So it was, it was constructive and, um, you know, we're working, somebody's working in conjunction with the town for the website. Um, we're trademarking C Situate, so that's going to be our logo. We're meeting with Mark Faverman in a couple of weeks to talk about signage and getting that done. So it's all very, very exciting about what we're doing and how we're going to get there. And as a matter of fact, I spoke with Mark Donofrio, who is, I think he's the president of the new bank, well, the new old bank down the harbor, Sea Coastal, however, whatever the name is. About money and economic development and that type of thing, financing. And that's a real issue. You know, how do you fund this, this stuff, and who do you go out to get to do it? So, there was that. The parade is happening. I think they, they raised more money than they need. And so, what else do I know? Nothing.
CBC.
Oh, CPC.
Yeah, I was gonna ask about that.
All right, CPC. The Maxwell property was a real bone of contention. It was a Donnybrook both at the CPC meeting on Monday night and then again Tuesday night with the Board of Selectmen. And it was, with the Board of Selectmen, it was a three to one vote against purchasing the property. Because there was a lot of, you know, he said, he said, he said, and this was promised, and that was promised, and it didn't happen, and so on. So that's sort of-
So, um, I'm sorry, I just, so the board did not approve the purchase?
But CPC did. CPC did approve the purchase, um, but the Board of Selectmen did not. And CPC is before the advisory board tonight to see what they have to say. So it's really rather contentious.
But what was the, was it primarily around this promise to repurchase?
Yes, yes.
So there was no written documents anywhere about it?
No, there is nothing. As a matter of fact, in the application from 2002/3, it stated in three different places that the Maxwell Trust had raised $750,000 to help the town, and they would purchase this particular portion and put a CR on it. And where's the money? And they kept the property, but they could not put a CR, a conservation restriction on it, because you have to have another party do that. So they didn't. And if there were a CR on it, it would be worth less than they want for it, which is the same, it's all a little bit confusing and somewhat convoluted. So we'll see what happens. Tabled, I'm sure you're all familiar with Central, what used to be Central School. And you all are aware of the cupola that is on top of Central School. Housing Authority came in and wanted $300,000 to repair it, which, on the face of it, seems like a tremendous amount of money. But that thing is almost one story high, and the sense was, well, for $300,000, we can, we can get affordable housing. Well, yes, you can, but that building was built in the 30s.
Forty-nine.
That was, that's forty-
I think 47. I was the first class in there in 49.
Oh, my God, I wouldn't claim-
Brand new.
Brand new? But I think it-
It was in elementary school.
Damn good shape.
Right, so.
It's still in great shape.
Right. Well, that said, um, I think that the bill, I think the building will look terrible if we took the cupola off of it. I really do. So we're, that has been tabled, CPC's-
How can you rationalize that? Because that would be maintenance to the building.
Believe me. It's maintenance to the building, but it has nothing theoretically to do with housing, even though replacing the windows-
No, but once it's, once it's designated as maintenance and understood to be maintenance, it's not a CPC fundable item?
I understand that, except the window.
They were trying to fund it through the CPC?
We were, yes, under housing.
That doesn't sound right.
No.
So I think what we're gonna do is go back and look at if there's, is there another bucket that we can take it out of, short of taking it off the roof, which I think would be really pretty sad.
Do you have, do you have multiple bids on it?
Buckets? No, and that's the other issue, too.
$300,000, that's a lot.
So much of it is on staging.
Scaffolding, yeah.
The scaffolding, it's unbelievable. And, um, the playground has doubled in price, and it's just about $600,000 for the playground up in North Situate. That has to do with preparing the site, and this is something that will most likely come before the planning board, in terms of a poured mat that needs to be put underneath the equipment. And it's an impervious poured mat. And I don't know how that's going to affect drainage and that, that type of thing. I, I think that could be a little bit of an issue. Uh, much of this is, is generated because of the new rules and regulations that have been, that have come down from the state. No longer can you have volunteers put something like this together. The, the rules have become really onerous, if you really want to come right down to it. But the Selectmen supported it. It will be a boon to North Situate in terms of bringing people in. And who knows, maybe somewhere down the road, the WPA building, which Susan Pippin had restored, will ultimately become a visitor center, which is what she had wanted. We voted against spending $4,000 to do an estimate on what needed to be done on the church, the First Baptist Church. We, um, voted to, the Selectmen voted to do, let's, purchase the Monsey, the Hennessy property. That was the piece that the Board of Selectmen wanted to put a water tower on, so it was kept out of the Hennessy development. And then the town decided that they didn't want it anymore, so now the, the trust wants the town to make good on what they initially said they were going to use it for, buy it. So that was approved. Bought boats for the recreation, uh, six sailboats, which, you know, were seaside community.
What are they doing with the old boats?
The old boats, um, they do have, I think the high school's going to use them. They were purchased, used, and, you know, but, yeah.
But they don't, they don't deteriorate?
Well-
I mean, the hulls don't, at least.
I understand, but it looks like sharks bit them. There were pieces, there were pieces missing. It's very-
Maybe I'm wrong, maybe they do.
No, but it's-
You run them into enough rocks and docks and stuff like that.
People think it's sharks here.
Right. The high school's sailing club uses them. And that's an issue, because now they're going to make sure that the boats come back in the same condition that they left. So that, that was an issue. Also voted to, um, put a new field hockey field up on Cushing. Cushing, what's their playground, and there will be, they were in here talking to us about that, so you know. Right, so, um, what else was there?
Actually, by the way, I happened to, to get the Mariner right before I came to the meeting, or I was reading it actually at dinner. And there's a really nice article that lists, I think, pretty much everything you mentioned.
Everything, pretty much, the Ellis property got their money, um, the historical society got their money. The three women voted against the $10,000 to look at something to do with the Lawson Tower.
Oh, it was the, um-
The storage.
Yeah, for the historical.
Yeah, yeah. So that was a three to six. It was-
Was there something that happened at Widows Walk, you mentioned?
Oh, yeah, that, that was withdrawn. We didn't, no, it's not happening.
Okay.
Now, in general, I think I asked this before, is anyone from the CPC gonna come before the planning board? Um, just to, I mean, you've already mentioned it, but-
She's our representative on the CPCs.
I know, okay. Because I just was curious. I know before, Lisa had come in and explained all the things, so I was just curious.
Well, I'm happy to do that, or I'm happy to have and do it, so.
Well, I mean, it's-
We had a pretty thorough briefing on this, what, a couple of months ago now, before the, before it went forward.
I mean, if you want, I can get more information, but I don't think that there is any more information to impart.
You may have been away at that meeting, Richard, I don't know.
I might have been, yeah.
I feel like we got a lot of information.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, town planner report?
Um, not too much this week. We got the hazard mitigation plan in kind of the Selectmen, and it's now gone off to NEMA, and then NEMA has to review it, and then it goes to FEMA. And this is the plan that we have to have to have, or else we won't get any grants. You know, the millions of dollars that Situate has gotten, and it really is millions, we wouldn't be able to get, so it's important. And then that same night at the Selectmen's meeting, after the CPC articles, I had to come back for the stormwater bylaw, which I don't know how they voted on that. Hopefully, they, they liked it. So the noncriminal disposition and the stormwater, I had to present to them. And when I was communicating, emailing with Tricia about the noncriminal disposition, she had contacted town council, and we can't just say the fine will be up to $300. It has to be spelled out. The first one would be 100, the second one would be 200, the third would be 300, and, you know, so on, which is the way you had it in the stormwater bylaw. So all the departments that are getting upgrades in their fines will have the same thing.
And that's a per-day fine?
It's a per-day fine. But, you know, I was questioned about that by, you know, one Selectman who I think had some concerns about it. But it wouldn't operate like you just go out and find people. I mean, you'd be writing letters and asking people to come in and have public hearings, or to do this and that. It would be more like, you know, the kind of like the, the stick that you carry and, you know, you try not to use it. But just to let people know that there is some mechanism. Because we really do get ignored in many cases with these stormwater permits, and you have to go out and wheedle with people and see if billing is willing to hold back on a CFO. And it just gets very, very complicated, so hopefully this will, like, simplify it. So there was that, and then with the stormwater bylaw, um, in the, in the noncriminal disposition, Tricia started calling me town planner, which is kind of what I go by. But in the town report, they just call me planner. So, um, I, I really like the town planner. It's more sort of universal. So, um, so I changed that in the stormwater bylaw, because she could change it in the other one. And then there were a couple of minor, minor changes that, you know, in the final reading, just seemed to need a little clarification. So, um, I had emailed Steve about those, and I have that email and the final version to hand out.
Excuse me.
So, and that's, that's it.
Do you want to, you want to talk about this, this name change, proposed change in the title of the, of the department here?
Sure.
Yeah, I think we can at least kick it around tonight, anyway.
Okay. Uh, I was in to see Tricia about some EDC-related stuff, and, um, EDC would be going well in the conversation. And she had a suggestion that the name of the department change from- And she had a suggestion that the name of the department change from Planning Department to Planning and Economic Development Department. It would be good in, I think, in a lot of ways. I think it would highlight that Situate is doing more for economic development than they've done in the past. And the fact is that I do spend, you know, a fair amount of time working with EDC and doing stuff for that committee. And I think it might also kind of focus the job more on planning and economic development, instead of planning and economic development and a little coastal and a little this and a little that, and really being like a catch-all. I think the more you can focus things, sometimes, you know, the better for your own morale and everybody else's around you, hopefully. So, anyway, those are my thoughts on it. But Tricia did not want to change it unless you all were comfortable with it. So, I guess the reason I'm bringing it up is really to see what your thoughts are about it.
Long overdue.
I think it sounds great.
I like the, you know, the sound of it. What would be the result of it, I guess, is my question? Would you work more closely with the EDC? Would you have expanded authority or duties in that area? Would there be actual changes in what you do and how you do it?
I don't think so. No, I think it's just kind of an honorific-type thing. You know, you just, yeah.
I guess that was my worry, is that it would add additional responsibility where we don't, where we talked about needing additional support anyway on the planning side, right?
Right, right. I mean, that's certainly one half, one side of the coin.
It reinforces that.
What's that?
I think by adding economic development, I think it reinforces the need for more.
Yes, it does.
Oh, yes, I absolutely agree.
But this isn't coming.
Maybe this is the first step in getting that to happen, which would be very good.
It's very possible.
Yeah.
Yeah, she mentioned, you know, of course, there's no additional staff, so that was, you know. But when someone says that, it's like they're acknowledging that, you know, there really is an need for it.
Well, it's actually interesting, when you parallel Boston, like, the Boston Redevelopment Authority. Redevelopment doesn't necessarily tell people what they do, because they are planning, economic development, there are a lot of things. When you look in there, when you go to their website, you see all the things that fall underneath them.
Absolutely.
It's not really redevelopment, so.
Well, planning by its nature is a very broad view of things, and it's not just a view of economic development. It is a view of environmental preservation and affordable housing and all those other things that come with it. So, I think that it may not accomplish a narrowing of the function, actually, because I don't think it really does, should not narrow the function. I mean, we're sort of the, we're supposed to be looking at the big picture, right, and all of the sort of connecting pieces. But I'm fine with, you know, economic development being one of those, right? So, and if it ultimately got to a point where maybe there were some additional resources that helped you do some of these things, that would be good, I think.
Well, and I also think that, just from a purely marketing standpoint, it highlights the fact that Situate is, as you mentioned, you know, forward-thinking and thinking about economic development. There's a town department as opposed to just a committee, which is a very important committee. But I think it gives it more credence, in the sense of, you know, all this is planning and economic development, and that's a very important part of what the town needs.
A little commitment. Do other towns have a similar title or a similar, does their planning department have that distinction? Or, I guess, would it open the planning department up to more input, information, more dealing with, you know, if somebody's looking for economic development on the South Shore, and the Situate Planning Board wouldn't come up, but Situate Planning Board and Economic Development would? And that's all I'm thinking, is that might, you know, bring in some more attention or anything. And that's what I was just kind of wondering, is, you know, does GoHasset have anything like this? Marshville have anything? Do any of the towns around have, does their planning board do anything more? They do more than planning, but do they have that title, or do they have a separate department? I'm just curious to see how other towns have addressed it as well.
Well, I Googled, because I had a little conversation with Steve about this before, you know, bringing it up with you all. And I Googled Planning and Economic Development Departments, you know, Massachusetts. And I think there were something like, I don't know, 25? I mean, there were, they were all in eastern Massachusetts, because western Mass, well, they weren't actually. There was West Springfield. I mean, there were some of the kind of towns around Springfield. So, there were a lot of them. But, for instance, Waymouth, where I happen to live, so I know the planning department up there a little bit, they have an economic development planner on their staff.
Okay.
Of course, they're much bigger than we are. Marshfield, I don't think does, but then they have more economic development than we do.
Right.
Hingham has a historic preservation planner, but not economic development. So, it's all kind of the interests and the traditions of the town that, you know, just reflects what the town is interested in.
No, I mean, I think it's a good idea to highlight it. All I was thinking is, there, like, in Massachusetts, you know, Economic Development Association or something like that, something to kind of help garner that growth or, you know, a commonplace to market or something. I don't know. I was just thinking.
There are a lot of organizations. But getting back to kind of the balance with planning, I think putting those two together, especially having had some experience working with EDC and working with the planning board, I think it would kind of elevate both of them, because the EDC, I think, people take quite seriously. So, I think that's a positive. And then, the planning, because it is so comprehensive, you know, that's a positive also. So, hopefully, it would kind of elevate both of them.
The two of them go hand in hand. They really do.
I would, yeah, I would just be worried about, you know, five years from now or something, you know, now economic development's sort of pushing to get more of your time, more of your staff's time. We just need to make sure the resources are there to properly manage the planning component of the two, and that would be my concern about it.
But that may actually be a benefit, in a way, of getting another person on staff.
Right.
If you get them. Otherwise, it can be a real drag, right?
But you know what? Steve, it still would be a drag if we didn't add it, because things are becoming more and more complex. As Tricia said to the selectmen and had handed out an 11-page whatever with all of the different projects that are going on in this town.
Oh, yeah, that's our dirt list. We do that every two weeks.
So, and this is something that most of us are totally and completely unaware of. The amount of work that is out there, which is why I spoke up both here and before the selectmen, regardless of whether or not we add economic development to the title, we need help. We absolutely, positively need help. And it's, sometimes, we end up doing, being so fragmented that things fall through the cracks, and we end up trying to pick up the pieces.
I agree, but, you know, the thing about when you sort of formally put them together and give it a formal title is that, you know, now people forget that it was sort of in name only at some point, right? That, and then there starts to become more demands on that organization beyond what our current demands are, and then we just need to make sure we can manage that. The flip side of that, and the other concern I had, but I think we probably can manage this as well, is that, you know, the notion of having planning and economic development together is a great idea for economic development, but it may also have the perception of, sort of, us being into bed together with developers who come in to do economic development, and we want to avoid that kind of perception, because that's not really the case. But I think with an elected board and the ability to, you know, Laura's doing her thing, right, with the administration, but the board is independent and objective, we should be able to manage that.
And we should never, ever lose sight of the fact that we are an elected board and that we are independent, so that, that's who we are. And we are answerable only to the voters.
Not to wordsmith too much, but what about just planning and development? That seems to sort of flow off the tongue a little better. Is that now too broad?
Well, I, there are departments that are called that, and I think that raises the question of.
Developers.
Whose pocket are you in?
Exactly. I think that's a worse perception.
Yes, I guess so, too.
Well, it may be, but it's also, you know, a lot of what we do.
Wrong people.
Right.
Well, no, I mean, it doesn't mean we approve it. It just means that we're involved in it.
Yeah, but a lot of times, you know, it's not what's going on. It's the perception of what might be going on that creates the problem, so.
I will.
Well, thank you very much.
I was just saying, again, I support it. I think it's actually a really good idea, so. I don't know, do we have to have a unanimous vote, or?
Well, she wasn't looking for a vote.
I think she just wanted input, right?
Okay.
And I would agree also.
Sense of the meeting.
Subject to you, you know, keeping track of what's going on and, you know, raising a flag if you end up with a lot more demands from the economic development side, that's starting to, I mean, you're stretched anyway, but if you keep stretching the rubber-band brakes at some point, right?
Yeah, yeah. Well, there are some demands with it, but.
But you indicated you're doing those now, right?
I'm doing those now.
So, you know, so, it's sort of in name only at this point, and, but I'm just worried that, you know, scope creep, right, that things start to creep, people forget it a year from now, and then, you know, suddenly, you and Karen swamped, you know?
That's your job, you.
Well, I mean, your nose is still above water, right? And we don't just, we want to make sure it's not just the top of your head.
Yeah. No, I think it would be, it would be nice to be acknowledged for it, because.
It gives everything credibility.
Two consultants working with EDC, it's amazing how much work there still is. So, and they're just doing a lot.
It's amazing what's coming down, seriously. And Laura has been more than helpful, more than helpful. So, it's, I think.
I want to tell them about the meeting in April, when Ted's going to present his ideas on North Situate, and there are going to be fabulous graphics and so on.
Coming into the planning board? No.
Well, no, I mean, he's having it with you, but I think you all would like to have, you know, as many people there as want to come.
Okay, we'll work on that.
Okay.
Okay. We have plans. You know, economic development, to me, also means the possibility of zoning changes.
Right. And I also.
It means a lot of things, right? But that doesn't necessarily mean people agree with the zoning changes that are proposed.
I understand that. But again, as I said earlier, a lot of this has to be, it's visionary to a certain extent, and it's not something that can be done overnight. Again, people do not like change. They're afraid of it. But that's the only constant that we have. So, we often end up reacting to something rather than having, before it happens, some type of semblance of a plan in place, an avenue to go down, that it's already talked about, so that it's not, oh, my God, this happened, and now what are we going to do?
Speaking of that, since you mentioned the zoning changes and EDC, is there something over, like, the next year or summer, that we should be looking at 40R, or?
I'm not sure that you can look at 40R right now. First of all, it's not going to fly in North Situate, although.
Infrastructure.
There's no infrastructure, and the selectmen are unwilling at this moment in time to give categorically that the sewage treatment plant will handle and that type of commitment to housing.
Okay, well, then, take it off from North Situate. What about 40R for Green Bush?
That's, no, no.
We had the same problem.
Same process.
They wouldn't commit to the availability of sewer.
Sewer.
Okay.
I mean, we, I think that's one that probably needs to get addressed, is kind of sewer capacity in town, right? And we still haven't had a chance to really kind of get educated on that. I'd still like to do that, but.
Okay. Yeah, who did I? I went in there with Ted, but, yeah.
I guess they were, I'm sure you guys all follow Facebook groups. There were some, like, posting that, I guess, they were cleaning one of the tanks, which is the sewage filtration tank. People were all up in arms about it, crazy.
Oh, the clarifier?
Well, exactly.
Well, they had it, well.
Because they thought it was like the drinking water, and then people were going crazy. Didn't you see those posts?
I try to stay as far away from that as I can.
Yeah, okay. But anyway, there was certainly lots of comments.
Well, because one of those was broken, and they need to rebuild it to fix it, and.
But see, that's the other issue, too. They are rehabbing them. They've talked about it in front of the selectmen. They just put one on, back online because they fixed it. They have another one that they have to fix. They're not operating at 100%.
No.
It is an aging, aging system.
Right, and I think that was the, that was the thing that we were trying to get a full picture on, is what is the current state of affairs? What is the current capacity? And what is the potential growth, and how might that be met? And I'm assuming somebody in the Water Department or whatever has that bigger picture. I would like to hear it. I'd like to know what we're talking about here, and whether somebody's managing it in a way where they're saying, well, we've had a proposal down on 3A, we've had a proposal down on Hadley, you know, for big developments, how does that all factor into the ability to meet the demand that's coming, so to speak?
Well, the selectmen have already agreed to give Toll Brothers 90.
I'm not, I'm not talking about that. I'm really talking about what is, so how does that translate into, how does the, how does our infrastructure function, right? And how close to limited capacity is it? And what is, what is the next step if we want to increase capacity? Or can we increase capacity? Or do we have to decrease usage? You know, you won't get North Situate sewed unless there's capacity, right?
I think you might want to think about bringing in whoever is in charge of the sewage treatment plant and Al Banger.
I think Laura was working on that to try to get us an opportunity to hear more about that.
That would be really nice, because, I mean, even, I've often thought, just curious, I know it probably may be, take a consultant, but like you said, let's just say we wanted to sewer every single home and structure in Situate. What would that cost? Would it be a billion? Would it be 500,000? I mean, 500 million? What is it? I have no idea. What's the potential?
Well, you know, what's really sad, and we don't like to look back, but we had the opportunity.
Right, I know you've mentioned this before.
You know, to sewer all of east of 3A, and somebody got up on the floor of town meeting and said, if you do that, no, it was really very, very short-sighted.
But I guess the thing is, we're in this situation, it is what it is.
That's right.
So, it would be nice to know, like, exactly what Steve said, what's the capacity? And if, you know, it'd be nice to know, like, some numbers, like, to say, sewer everything east of, yeah, sewer everything east of 3A, what would that cost? Or would it even be feasible?
In fact, you can do, you know, development-specific waste treatment plants, too. I mean, those kinds of things are done distributed. It's like distributed generations, distributed water treatment, you know? You can do those kinds of things. I just don't know if it's, if any of that's sort of in the mix in terms of planning for the future, right? And it seems like we should know, know that at some level, anyway, know what the, what the current plans are and maybe what the options are.
Right.
It seems to me Duxbury put in a pocket or a small sewage treatment plant in around Powder Point, somewhere down there.
Well, there's one up in high school.
Yeah.
Well, a package plant is still going to have someplace to leach the effluent, so you need, you need perk, you know, you need ground with a decent perk rate, no matter what. So, there's a lot of places in Situate that don't have that, and also separation from groundwater, same thing. So, you know, there's that. Another conversation would be water. I mean, sewer can be handled on-site if it's not available, but water is water. How much development can we, can we do before we need to increase our withdrawal permit? And can we do that? And how does that work?
They just sent out the water plan, right? We saw the water plan from Water Resources Commission, yeah. So, they've, they've sort of identified kind of where they are right now, and I'm sure John would come in and sort of give us the overview if we wanted to do that.
Yeah, but I think where they are.
And I'd be happy to ask him to do it, too.
Where they are doesn't give, it's not like we have a lot of expansion capability.
Well, nobody does.
With that plan.
You know, nobody, I think a lot of eastern Massachusetts is the same boat, right? They're in, they're in worse shape than we are. But I, it, that would be useful, too, to have, have John Clarkson come in and maybe just give us the overview of where things are and, and kind of where, where it's headed and what kind of options we have. I think what we'll probably hear is, is conservation's going to be critical, right?
Yeah.
So manage, manage usage, so we're, you know, we're managing withdrawals, right? But, okay. So maybe we should see if we can, if we, if we get it a night like this, you know, we could get John on the agenda, and then we could talk about what we can do on the, on the sewer side, too. I don't know if they're willing to come in here, but maybe we could have a different meeting or something like that.
Yeah, I'll go after him again for a meeting. Are Mondays good for you, or any particular day of the week in the morning? First thing in the morning seems to work well for him.
Yeah, I'd rather do it first thing in the morning myself, I don't know about if others want to do it.
I could do it, obviously, I'm here.
I could do it.
Yeah, I could do that.
Because I might be able to, you know, post them, especially in the first thing in the morning.
Yeah, Monday morning would be okay with me.
Yeah, I'd be okay with you, too.
You know, what occurs to me is that everything we've spoken about, all these things that we've touched on tonight are components of the master plan, which we've also spoken about needing an update and that forward.
Well, I think I mentioned that. By the way, I missed, I missed the Cohasset one.
Well, maybe we should be thinking about that for the next, you know, next year, and then as a lead-up to that, try to get some of this key infrastructure, sort of, get, get up to speed on this key infrastructure stuff as we go along, so, you know, we can do, maybe targeted, we'll do water and sewer, I don't know if we need to do other elements of infrastructure, maybe, maybe we could hear something, I don't know what we could hear about seawalls and stuff, but it would be good to, you know, kind of have those pieces before we roll into a, kind of a master plan update, I would think.
There's a lot to be, to be heard for, about seawalls and, you know, protection and mitigation and, and that sort of thing.
Yeah, that's probably the biggest, that's our biggest challenge as a town, you know, we face that.
Certainly got to be dealt with, no question.
Real quick question, just for Ann, since you're talking about the EDC. In the report that was created, now it's been like, what, two years, I think, or has it been a year? The, the report that was done for the economic development...
Oh, from MACC?
Yeah. One of the recommendations was potentially doing an RFP, a request for proposal for Widow's Walk, for a conference center or something like that. Is that completely off the table, or is anyone disgusted?
I think the town administrator is dealing with that.
Okay.
We have, what, another two years on the bond before it's paid off?
December of '17, it will be paid in full.
Is that right?
Yes.
That's pretty cool.
I've been walking there, over there, well, now I can anymore, since you started. But, you know, when you walk through it, and I must admit, I haven't, wasn't that familiar with it, it really is a beautiful location.
Yes, it is.
And it would, like I said, make such a nice conference center or some of that. I mean, I think it's underutilized, I guess that's my point, under, I know you may disagree, but it could certainly be utilized more.
Just leave the golf course, you can have the conference.
Yeah, of course. No, I think, that's great, it's a beautiful location.
Give me a place to get a cart out and get a cart back in.
Okay, I have Bob's motion on the table.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Aye. We're adjourned.